The Planning Commission, North Bend Planning Commission, April 22nd. Starting at, I'm going to put 7:03. Are you good with that? Okay, let's do a roll call first. Thank you all. I know it's trying, trying to get in on this stuff. And I feel like, Mike, I can't wait for when we all get together. Let's do the roll call. Commissioner Bovers.
Present.
Commissioner Bush.
Here.
Commissioner Greenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Mo.
Present.
Commissioner Torgerson. Here. Commissioner Tell.
Here.
We have, Commissioner Blanco is here. We have a full team tonight. So there we go. Thank you. All of us are here. Let's move to number two on the agenda tonight. This is the opportunity for a public comment on a non-agenda item. Each person gets three minutes and we just would ask you to give your name and your address. Do we have someone that would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight? I think we've hearing done. We'll move on from that and go to item number three on our agenda, which is the approval of the April 8th Planning Commission meetings. And I did receive an email, I think we all did, on some corrections on this. So this is the opportunity for commission comment.
Would you like me to make my comments first?
I would. I just want one clarification. And I don't know whether this is technical or not. But Commissioner Bovers logged in when we first started. And then, I think we lost you. Is that correct, Commissioner Bovers?
You talking about last meeting?
Yes.
No, I couldn't get in. The teams had an issue. I followed up with the IT at the city. And I'm able to get in as a browser, but not through the application anymore. Something about the licensing for my account.
So, did you catch us on audio? In other words, were you in attendance or should we ask?
No, I was not.
Okay, that's, alright. I just wanted to get that clear. I didn't know whether you heard us and just didn't go. So, please Commissioner Greenberg, go ahead.
Okay, so in that case, Commissioner Bovers also did not attend.
That's correct.
And then on line 14 of the minutes, it says, "I was unable to attend, but I was there." And Commissioner Mo was unable to attend also.
That's, that's what I have on my notes.
I wasn't there.
Bush, Bush was out.
Okay, so with those changes, I'll move that the minutes be approved.
Do I have a second?
All second, five.
All second.
Who was, who made the second?
Commissioner Mo.
Commissioner, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Well, we have a motion made by Commissioner Greenberg to approve the minutes of the April 8th meeting that was seconded by Commissioner Mo. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Well, it looks like the motion passed by a vote of seven of us. Seven to zero. So, there we go. We've got that taken care of. Commissioner Greenberg, do you need to come in before we do anything else? Item number four on some of your suggestions or with the March minutes. Do you want to come in on that now or do we want to leave that later?
Well, that, my comments were on lines 22 to 25 of the minutes we just approved. I guess, all I would say was, I don't think it's appropriate to change the minutes because what was reflected in the minutes was correct. But I think what was said during the meeting was incorrect. So that's why I simply sent the link to the Municipal Research and Service Center page about abstentions.
Yes.
And just for anyone who hasn't seen that, anyone listening in or viewing who hasn't seen that comment, basically, according to MRSC and Robert's Rules of Order, abstentions are counted toward the quorum. So in our situation, we have four members present. Two of us abstained on approving minutes. So, in reality, those minutes should have been approved by a vote of two to nothing. But there was a quorum of four there.
That's true. That's right. That's right.
Unless, unless there's something in city code that I wasn't aware of.
Is there, I'm not aware of any other code that would apply.
So there's no, there's no, we don't have to take any action on that. I just thought I would point that out for future reference.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and take a look at it.
Yeah.
I was always under the impression you needed a majority of the quorum and two out of four was not a majority. And so that's where the misunderstanding took place. So I appreciate you looking into it and we'll definitely make sure we have it right moving forward.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for sending that along. I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think we are now, introduction on item number four, the introduction of a development agreement for a potential West North Bend Way senior housing project. Can we please have the staff report?
Absolutely. So I will give just a very brief introduction and then I'll turn it over to the applicant to be able to present their proposal. And then what I'll do is I'll come back and walk through some of the criteria for approving a development agreement and consistency with the comp plan and so forth. Turn it over to you for questions and discussion. So this has been in the formation for about two years. So Ms. Sukisun is on the meeting with us tonight. And she first came to the city two years ago, inquiring about the potential to do a senior housing project. At the time, she had presented a four-story, or maybe it was, you know, a five-story initially, much larger building that initially had 93 units. And we said, "That's probably not going to fly. That's a really big building." And so she reduced it at that point down to 87 units. And we took that initial proposal to the City Council for discussion, or actually initially to the Community Development Committee for discussion. And they kicked it up to the City Council. And the City Council's feedback was, "That's still too large." And so Ms. Sukisun reduced the building down to its present size of 60 units. Let me just start out, I'll share my screen to show you the location if you're not familiar with where it's located. Can y'all see my screen?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Alright, now you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So here's the downtown, right here. And West North Bend Way, as you're leaving, if you're driving towards Snoqualmie or I-90, it's this last property before you hit the river. So it's just west of the fourhouse and the north parking ride lot. There's two parcels. There's this larger parcel and there's a smaller parcel just immediately north of that. So it's along the levee. And just along West North Bend Way on the very west end of the downtown. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Okay, so this is a development agreement request. That's even as reduced. Ms. Sukisun is asking for an increase in the allowed height of the building. Right now, 35 feet is the height limit in that area of the downtown commercial zone. That's both in our existing code as well as in the proposed form that code. The 45-foot height limit starts just east of there at Sydney Avenue. So this is just outside of that allowance of the 45 feet. This site has got a slope topography that slopes down away from West North Bend Way. And so what that does is that affects the ability, or that affects the overall height that you can get. Because the way that the city's height limit is measured by our code, it's the average base elevation. So if you imagine that site sloping down, instead of measuring 35 feet, from that point, you're measuring 35 feet as you're going down the hill, which brings the top down. And so that makes it a little bit more challenging to be able to get the full height that you anticipate. There's also the factor of it being in floodplain, which pushes up from the bottom. You have to, according to flood regulations, elevate residential to two feet above the base flood elevation. So that's your capacity right there. And that's one of the primary reasons for Ms. Sukisun seeking a development agreement. Let me turn it up to Ms. Sukisun right now, or to, I believe Misty is on the call as well, from Charlie Morgan Associates and Billy's Architect.
I'm also here. This is Ambly.
Okay.
Do you want Misty to go or do you want me to introduce myself?
Why don't you just introduce yourself real quick and then?
Okay, I'm Ambly Segation. I'm the founder of ML Senior Living Project in North Bend. I don't know the video is on or not. I'm, you know, if, I cannot take it, turn it on if you want to see me. Is it from your end or?
We can't see you from our end, no.
I, I'm not able to click the camera on.
Oh, okay.
I think it is, it's disabled from your end?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I'll just talk then. So, little bit background, I'll just explain a couple of minutes on my initiative. Actually, I'm one of the board members of Indian Association of Washington in the last five years. I have been getting more involved in the community outreach effort as part of that nonprofit. I work direct with the Indian senior community in crisis care, their isolation issues and, you know, many other issues they are facing here. At that time, I realized that we have a growing aging population and need community housing and other support. Since I already have extensive experience in multifamily management, I thought of adding a senior-oriented building with services available to make their life easier. Even though I was inspired to do this by my service with the Indian community, I see the same need across our generation. And this project is for everyone. And about North Bend, as everyone knows, is a very naturally beautiful and tucked-away city. And I think it's perfect for people transitioning into their senior age. And this particular area, as Mike was showing, is also a good fit for this project. I hope that the surrounding trees and walk by the river will be very soothing to our senior residents. I also strongly believe that the amenities like yoga, healthy food, spa-inspired services and possible, I don't know if this is possible, but possible rooftop deck will increase the quality of life of our seniors. Of course, this residential community and building is part of North Bend and will be integrated as part of it. Especially for residents coming from outside the city, I think the proximity to the main city area will provide an exciting new area to explore. Meanwhile, the project will bring new development to the area. The restaurant and other amenities discussed above will be open to anyone who wants to stop by. And will also bring more jobs into the city. We may also see more visitors to the area because of this, because of this new community. I just want to conclude by saying that helping the elder population is something that has been always been sincerely important to me. Growing up in a big multi-generational family, we were raised to always care for our elders. The problems that I described earlier are real. And I do believe that this project will help people. I plan to make this initiative one that we can all be proud of. I thank you, everyone, supporting me in this. The City Council, Mike, and everyone involved in attending this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Misty, Misty Clink is with us as well, from Charlie Morgan Associates. Would you like to just share your screen and present some of the facts of the project? Yeah.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes.
Charlie Morgan's here. I don't have a screen, but I'm here. So.
I can share my screen and just go to the?
Well, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on just a phone. So I'm going to have to just kind of visualize it and go with it. So I listen through it. I do want to add some pointers to it, and that is, there are some comments about the site being sloped. And in actuality, the site's flat. There is a slope from the street to the site that is actually driving a very large change in how this thing works. Because the slope in itself is, is a require, or, so the downtown zoning requires that the building be at the street. If this building was actually back from the street, we would have less of it, somewhat less of an issue of this. But that's just, that's just part of it. So, so the, there was a comment about moving the building further back. That doesn't necessarily work because it's not really meeting the downtown aspect of what we're looking, that everybody's looking for. So, there was, the fact of this project as a benefit is tremendous. Because you're taking a piece of property that's been vacant since the history of North Bend and you're now looking at establishing a commercial frontage on a difficult site that's going to provide now access or pedestrian desire to travel the whole street and then even connect to the trail that would be living along the river. So this proximity to the river and connection for the pedestrians from the downtown to the river. So, we've had tremendous amount to the downtown.
Let me go back to this way.
So, so adding this project, not only as a senior, but just any particular apartment project in that location is adding a tremendous amount to the downtown community in that area. So, you know, then we add the fact that senior living is very much an important requirement, or I wouldn't say requirement, very much an important desire within all communities. This project, in essence, is bringing something that is needed in and around the area. So those aspects of the project will really benefit the downtown region with pedestrians from the building, reason for pedestrians to walk to that section of town, cleaning up an area that currently has pedestrians that are probably not desired and would be very much a benefit to it. In the case of the story height, we've gone to a building that's got a pitched roof that actually pushes it over the story height. But we're very close to meeting the criteria. And as explained, the site itself, being in the floodplain, basically eliminates one floor as far as use other than a parking structure. So the building, the building itself would be a three-story building of wood, meeting the criteria. But now we're lifting it above the floodplain and we're lifting it to a level that meets the street to the south. So that it can meet the code requirements for the commercial connection, connectivity to the sidewalk.
Thank you, Charlie. So, in exchange for that additional eight feet of height, yeah, 5-foot height limit, am I echoing as well?
No, you're fine. Somebody else is echoing. I don't know where it's coming from, but.
Okay. So in exchange for that additional eight feet of height, what Ms. Sukisun is offering is that she would provide 10% of the units within the development as affordable housing. So that would be affordable housing at 80% of area median income. And Commissioner Greenberg emailed suggesting that we put what that is at present rate. So, based on a single renter at 80% area median income, that would be $63,360. Or for a two-person household, $72,400. And that's just at present rate. That would be a continuous thing. So that would, this would be deed restricted, permanent affordable housing, those 10 units. So that over time would stay with that area median income factor. And so that's, that's basically the trade. That's what the development agreement is seeking. And the advantage of doing a development agreement in this case, rather than just doing a code amendment to extend that 45-foot height limit further west, is that commitment of the affordable housing. That's not otherwise required. And so that's the advantage of pursuing this through the development agreement. In terms of consistency with the municipal code, that's one of the primary criterias for looking at a development agreement. You want to make sure that what you're doing is in the public interest and consistent with the comp plan. Ms. Sukisun and Mr. Morgan have both touched on some of these points, but it actually does hit a lot of the important points raised in our comp plan. I included in the staff report a number of policies that this particular project supports, including providing a variety of housing types, providing mixed-use housing, providing additional pedestrian activity within the downtown core. And then I think the most important thing is providing for the ability for our community to age in place. So as they mentioned, this is an important housing need. And in North Bend right now, other than a few specific affordable housing projects, actually I think owned by the senior center, there is not a market rate project in North Bend right now. So as people age and no longer need their large, single-family home, what they have to do at present is leave the valley. And that's not desirable for the residents of our community. So this is meeting an important need in our comprehensive plan to provide a variety of housing types. Just also, the mixed-use component is important. That brings additional residents to support downtown businesses as well as providing restaurant space. So this is a, this will have commercial and restaurant space on the ground floor that helps add to the vitality of the downtown. It also provides the link to the river, as Mr. Morgan mentioned. And the restaurant space has kind of an outdoor plaza area adjacent to where the trail would link to the river. So that's a nice amenity that it helps extend the downtown further to the west. In terms of impacts from the proposal, environmental impacts, we don't really see many. We would have the typical reviews. This would include a critical areas review and a shoreline permit to make sure that it's consistent with those critical area and SEPA and shoreline regulations. In terms of economic impacts, this would again have a positive impact on the downtown, providing some of that synergy for additional businesses and providing that walkable vibe within the downtown area. As far as traffic impacts, they will have to submit a traffic analysis as a part of the actual application. But given its location, it's likely to have far less traffic impacts than what other projects would have. Because traffic would be coming primarily off of I-90 and not through the rest of town, coming into the site. Impacts to adjacent properties, this is where it comes back to the height issue. It is a little bit more reserved or more removed from other residential properties. So the closest residential properties are to the north. But they're separated from the building itself by the parking lot, the outside parking lot in the building. So it's not right up against the building. And then the visual impacts are mitigated from the design of the building itself. So if you look at the facade, the architect has done a really nice job. Sharing my screen here. When you look at the facade, it looks like a two-story building. The ground floor isn't actually a two-story floor. So it gives that appearance of a two-story, even though the facade along the street is a three-story. And then as you move back from the site, you can see this, the site slopes down to that underground parking. And so that's where the, the taller building would be, but less visible from the street. So, let me turn it back over to the planning commission to see what questions that you have. I know Mr. Greenberg raised some questions and we'll be happy to address those. I'll address the ones that I can, then I'll turn it over to the applicant to address some of the questions that would be in their submittals. So just a couple of additional things to clarify in this before we go to that. This is just for the height issue at this point. So the applicant doesn't want to spend a huge amount of money on engineering and flood studies and critical areas analysis and so forth, unless they know that this project could move forward. So we don't have a lot of information at this point. We just have some conceptual renderings and a conceptual site plan. Once, if and only if the development agreement is approved, would they then formally submit and it would go through the review process? Another thing to mention is, this is dependent upon wastewater treatment plant capacity. And that is still in the works. So as you know, the, the council has recently approved the upgrade to the treatment plant. But that'll still be about two years out before that's actually constructed and concurrency available. So the project would not be happening right away. It would still have to have that capacity before it could be approved. I'll turn it back to you guys. Oh, Commissioner Blanco, I think you're on mute or I can't, were you saying something?
I think her video's frozen.
She looks frozen.
She's deep in thought.
This is Commissioner Torgerson. I have no problem with the increased height. I mean, it's off the side, so it's not going to block anyone's vision. And I think it sounds like a wonderful project, seeing, you know, the restaurants and the ability to walk along the water. And then, you know, I don't see any big traffic issues because people could come, you know, down West North Bend Way from I-90. And, and then, most likely, people that would live there are going to be wanting to walk to downtown. And so there's not a lot of extra vehicles being, you know, driven. And they have plenty of parking. So I see, I see nothing but positives. I don't see any red flags from my perspective. So that's what I have to say.
I will, I can go next if you want. So, and I have to find my email I sent. So there were a couple of comments I had, section one and section three of the staff. Just some things that need to be made, and I assume staff will make those corrections at some point.
Yes, yes.
That, that was all. I just, I got confused about everything about Habitat, where they were asking for sewer feed waivers. It's like, wait a minute. I understand cutting and pasting.
Yeah. The easiest way to start a report, but I just overlooked that section that was a holdover. So I'll update that for the next time.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. And I'm assuming there's been a topography survey done. And if so, can we get a, can we get a copy of that, please?
And that's where I'll have to ask the applicant, because I have not received that myself. And again, it kind of relates to how much in our investment do they want to put into this before knowing whether or not it's a go?
A topography is done.
Pardon?
I said the topography survey was done and the geotech survey is also completed.
Okay.
Yeah, we can send you copies if you like. Yeah, we can send you copies if you like.
Yeah, if you could send that to staff and then they can send it to the commission.
Sure.
That would be appreciated. And then I had a, so I was trying to look at the site plan. And I was thinking, maybe you wouldn't need the development agreement for the height issue if the project was split into two buildings. But it sounds like since the topography difference is in the front, I thought it was more toward the north. Does splitting it into two buildings or doing some sort of redesign, would that alleviate the need for the development agreement and allow you to meet the code at 35-foot height above base elevation?
No, because we still have to get above the floodplain.
Okay, and how?
So we have, so we have a, I don't know, but it's, and, and quite honestly, you wouldn't want to do a senior building what's not all connected. Because one of the main things of the senior building is security and connection.
Okay. And, and I know, you know, we have a lot of the, I think all of the downtown commercial zone is in the floodplain or most of it. What has the history been about projects needing to exceed the height limit because of the floodplain issues?
Well, the, so if we were, but if we were in the downtown, we would be 45 feet. See, if we were 45 feet, we would do that.
This is, this is the
But I mean, we're, we're a block, we're a block away from it. And actually, the new code is, it would actually allow it to a certain degree to be 45 feet.
No. So we haven't encountered a challenge because of floodplain requirements for a building being able to meet the desired outcome, but we have not yet had a, a building of this nature submitted before.
Okay. And then my other question was relating to form-based code. Sort of what impact would the new form-based code have on this project? Would it be beneficial for this project? Would it allow it to occur without the, the development agreement for height? I mean, how does that? I understand that this project was applied for under current regulations, but I'm just curious what the form-based code would do.
The project is not yet vested, so
Okay.
Form-based code will apply to this project. I know the applicants, the form-based code today to take a look through more carefully. The only thing that I saw that could apply would be the step back that's required off of North Bend way. And that's something that I want to talk with staff about also. This, I think there's, we want to think through it a little bit more. How it applies, what it requires, the 25-foot steps for the top level of and depending on the design of this building, that, that may need
I'm sorry, can we have everyone make sure you stay muted unless you're talking? We're starting to get echoes if, if you're not muted. Thank you.
Other than that 25-foot step back issue, I didn't see anything in the form-based code that could be limiting. But again, that's why I provided it to the applicant so that they can take a more thorough review against it at this point. The size limit for the units, that's another question that you had. And I don't know what that is yet. I don't have that material from the applicant. Other thing where the form-based code is the size limit within the downtown commercial zone, but I don't imagine that's going to be a problem because these are intended for seniors, so it's not big family apartments.
That would be helpful information, at least for me, to see at our next meeting, which I think would be the public hearing. So I don't need it today.
Okay, there are new units that are 1,200 square feet. The one bedrooms average 590 square feet and a two-bedroom averages 900 square feet.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, I muted myself. Let's see, CIPA checklist says the maximum slope on the site is 1%, yet there's a request for a height increase due to slope. So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to why a height increase is needed if the slope's only 1% or if that's just simply an error in the checklist?
No, it, it's, well, the slope itself, the entire slope, the property that we would be using itself is flat. The property that we would be acquiring from the city is the right-of-way has the slope from the floodplain where you filled to the, to the street.
Yeah, let me add a clarification there. So something that they're seeking, which wouldn't be a part of the development agreement, would be a, a street vacation because the right-of-way at that particular parcel is very wide for some reason. And so what that would do is it would push the building way back from the street, which doesn't work well for a mixed-use building. Our design standards call for the building to be built up against the street, which provides that nice sidewalk relationship for the ground floor commercial. And that's only possible to do a street vacation to bring that alignment up to what it is with the rest of North Bend way. And so that's the issue that Mr. Morgan's talking about.
Okay, so the, the slope on the property itself is 1%. But the slope from the current street down to the current property line is greater than 1%?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Quite, it's quite a bit because it's, I mean, it, it, it's like, some areas, it's probably 15%. You know, on the, on the west side where it slopes down, I mean, in there. Some of that area is going to be in the wetland buffer area, so it it's not really impacting the, the building, but the area along the front edge of the property of the building, the area along the front of the building will be raised so we can have the connectivity for the commercial space and the plaza space to the, to the existing sidewalk.
Okay.
And meet ADA standards.
Okay. And for, for staff, I mean, I think that's a really important piece of information that we didn't have. So I, I think that would be really good to put in the record in the staff report. And explain how that works because I was very confused as to why this was being requested. So I'd appreciate that being reflected in the
And then Charlie, if you can add that to the CIPA checklist as well, just so that that's understood as well by anybody who
Okay, I think that, I think that did it for my questions. Thanks for all the, the good information. I appreciate it.
Do we have Judy back, Commissioner Blanco back with us?
Hi, I'm back.
Okay.
Thank you for, sorry about that. I don't know what happens, but I did make it back in. So missed a little bit, but has, has, has all the commissioners, I just heard Scott come in. Any other questions from other commissioners that we've had? Or ever have, everybody have an opportunity?
I have a question, Commissioner Mo.
Please go.
I was just wondering who was going to be in charge of the affordable housing part of it. Are we going through HUD? Are we going through the state? Is this private?
I can answer that sort of, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to agree somehow with the city because no, HUD doesn't do it. They, the areas, I do affordable housing all the time. So we're, in this case, Washington State Housing, the housing board would be typically how you, where most affordable housing is kind of linked up. In this case, we really wouldn't be able to go through that because the allocation of, you have to go for allocations of money. So as Mike written in there, it's really going to have to be written into the development agreement and it really be a city, so to speak, relationship with this project as how it's audited and how it's followed in that regards. So they, you would, we would probably be able to get paperwork or whatever from the Washington State Housing Board as to how exactly the paperwork works on this. I, as architect, I don't get into the paperwork, but I know they're the ones that usually, Washington State Housing is the one we would get our information from.
So we have other project, not senior, but that has got a percentage of apartments allocated for affordable. And there is a process to follow for that, that the state provides. And, you know, there is audit and the, the number of apartment has to be allocated like, you know, by number. So that is always going to be the affordable house or apartment. So you have to define that upfront is what my understanding is. But since, you know, we are still, don't have approval for these projects, you know, we still have to do some more research to give you a clear definition of how this is going to work for affordable, but we are willing to dedicate 10% to, to affordable housing.
So inevitably, the city of North Bend, are you saying that they would be responsible for managing this and making sure that these units stay affordable?
So I, I got your, I got your question. So we are looking at this. This isn't our first one that we will be dealing with. We don't have currently a contract with a nonprofit that would manage the reviews. The DA would have specific language on what they are required to turn in to us and, and it would be the city reviewing those materials to make sure that it is meeting the requirement. So yes, in a sense, it would be the city managing it unless we, in the future, signed a contract with a nonprofit to manage all of our affordable housings if we end up having enough, that that makes sense. But, but it would get written very specifically, there would be an agreement very specifically on what is required to be turned in each year for us to review and ensure that it is meeting the requirements.
And I believe that would be part of the state guidelines. So, and like I said, I think the housing department, you know, there would, would, would have that paperwork. So I know other cities have it. I, like I said, most cases, it's usually affordable housing is usually connected with the whole financing and the whole, whole project, but some of the cities do have it and I'm sure we can find the paperwork that would, that would easily explain it. So. But like Emily says, until we can get to this point and making this work, you know, that we're, that's, that's the minor details to the whole process. I know the afford, you know, you will, you will get your affordable housing, I mean, because that's going to be in your, in, in the, in the development agreement.
Would you guys be willing to give us more units than just six?
I think we can definitely consider as we get more into, you know, where we can get some more support from the city, like, you know, maybe some reduction in impact fee or, you know, some give and take from both sides. That will definitely help, but I really believe in, you know, supporting everyone. And, you know, affordability is becoming a big, big problem now, especially among seniors.
Definitely. That's why I feel like we should have more than six units. I don't think that six units even really begins to start to fulfill the needs that we have.
Well, then I wish I had one more story and then I could have given a lot more. Right? I mean, it's like
Yeah. This, this project, I'll be very upfront, is very, the numbers, when they come through, it'll be a very difficult site to get done, if it can get done, because we've reduced it down to a smaller amount of units than typically is applied, is, is built into one of these buildings to provide all the amenities that you're looking at. Because it's really
Yeah, I have to cut down. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah. I mean, we're, this building is providing the facilities and what would support, would typically be for 100 to 150 unit building, which is where we were at originally. We were trying to get to, to 100 because that, that gets closer to the real aspect of how much these things cost to build and maintain. So.
Well, although I do think a pool and a spa would be amazing, are there any amenities that we could potentially cut back on so that we could offer more affordable housing units?
Um, not really, not really, not really, because the pool and the spa would be it because we really were, the other locations that we're putting are the, the commercial retail. So that's the commercial, you know, adding the amenities and adding the commercial retail is, is really, you know, the, the two big aspects that drive up the cost of this.
I think one
More difficult.
One important consideration on behalf of the applicants is this is a market rate project. So when you do a, a real affordable housing project, a subsidized housing project, that comes with a lot of funding from the federal government, whereas these, these guys are doing it as a project just to sell on the market. And so it's a lot harder to be able to get those affordable units and, and make the project pencil.
Commissioner Bellico has a quick question here. I don't know if anybody's asked it. I, I had to check out for a few minutes. But I was wondering if ML Senior Living had ever done something like this before?
Um, like I was saying in my introduction, we have experience in a multifamily all over Washington and in Dallas, but senior living is something I started thinking about only with my involvement in the community for last five years. And I started sensing that need in our community and also in all our community.
So this is your first senior
This is my first project and I'm looking at a similar project in Lynwood and in Renton right now. Yeah, so one of the thing will, you know, one of the sender will start sooner. I don't know how much delay we will have at North Bend, but we are talking with the Renton City and also Western Homish.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And in my case, and in my case, as an architect, I've designed about 60 of these projects. The majority of them are, more, majority of them are affordable.
And the recent And Charlie's experience is what made us hire Charlie for this project with senior, senior living experience that he can bring in and things we may have to account while during construction to support seniors, you know, requirement like additional, you know, RAM or, you know, a lot of other things that we don't think in general for a, a family apartment.
Okay, I have one more question, Commissioner Mo. So worst-case scenario, if this project is started and is abandoned, is the, what is the applicant responsible for returning the land to? Or are they not? Can they just walk away? I'm thinking obviously the hotel site by the safe way.
Funny you bring that up. We're actually, I just sent an email today about that issue. It was yesterday. So there is, there's a site restoration bond that applicants have to post when they do a project like this. And that covers the, the situation of what if they don't finish the project. And so we're asking the hotel folks right now to clean up the remaining half-finished improvements. So they either need to submit a new project that incorporates those improvements or they need to work to clean that, that up, to remove the paving, the unfinished stormwater pond, et cetera. Or the city will do the same under the terms of that bond.
So you're saying that they would, this project would have to return the land the way it is now with?
They'd have to post a site restoration bond as a part of declaring grading permit, yes.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Torgeson. This is for you, Mike. I was wondering, so we're limited at This is for you, Mike. I was wondering, so we're limited at sixty units. Is there any way to provide them with the ability to do more than sixty units?
So they're not limited to the sixty units. There's nothing in our code that limits that. They're just running against the height cap. So that's the principal factor.
We run into a height gap. We also run into a logistics of fire. If the building gets too long, we can't get access for the fire. So it's a balancing act of, that's why heights works really well with these is that allows us to shorten up the, the distance of the building, you know, Charleston works well for seniors, so they don't have to walk this far. And then allows for the fire access. With the fact that the west side of it is the river, we're kind of limited into access over there.
With the new zoning, whatever the new document that Mike sent, will this allow more height or it's not a possibility?
It doesn't change the height at all.
Okay.
I thought you read in there Misty, it allowed up to forty-five feet.
So it's the same as what is currently zoned. So just to the east of where your site is, starting at Sydney Avenue and working east, it's forty-five feet, except for the downtown historic zone. But you're just outside of that area.
Is that a way to make an exception?
So that you could do a code amendment if the council supported that. The advantage from the city's perspective to doing the development agreement is that's our hook to get you to provide that affordable housing because there's nothing in our code by itself that requires provision of affordable housing. So it's that horse trading through the development agreement. We're offering you that additional height and you're providing in exchange the 10% of affordable units.
And quite honestly, the forty-five feet isn't going to give us another story, I don't think, correct? Because we're already at forty-something or other feet. This is, I can't remember on the elevation, but I don't think even going to forty-five feet, the way it works, we would get another story because we're kind of halfway in between already.
We're asking to go up to forty-three feet.
Yeah, what?
We're asking to go up to forty-three feet. So forty-five feet doesn't help, even if the poor house was taller next door.
So going to forty-five feet isn't going to, in essence, like code, isn't going to really change us to get us more at this point in time.
Well, my question is, since it is a developer's agreement, I mean, can they go up another story? What would that other story height be? Would it be fifty-three feet? You know, what is that?
That's where they started and presented to council back in the fall. And council said, we're not going to support that. So they wanted them to reduce scope. And when they reduced the scope, that's where it went to the council committee. And council committee said, okay, let's take this through the public process now. But if it went back up to an additional story, it's unlikely that it would have council support at the end of the process.
If it went up to fifty, I'm sorry, if it went up to fifty-three feet, one more story, how many more units would that be? And like, how many more low-income housing could we add?
Well, it was like eighty-some units, wasn't it? Eighty-three units or something like that? And so how many, how many units could we get? That's a juggling act that we would have to get the council to agree to, you know.
Now, if they agree. If the council agreed, we can put that height back and get more units and dedicate more to affordable, affordable units.
I mean, you're giving us six affordable units for sixty total units. So I really don't think another story is really going to give us that many more affordable units. It just doesn't sound like it, just.
Why not? Why? If you, if you give them, put it this way, if you give them that extra story and we get closer to eighty units, this project gets much closer to where it really balances in the cost of what it is to what what we have, because we have the parking for the eighty units. We're not really building anything more. So maybe you can get a bigger percentage than what we're given for that.
Yeah.
I don't want to say exactly how much, but I mean, you know, I mean, you kind of, you kind of can write that in yourself as the council as to what you would, what you would require us to do to get that extra floor. Because the extra floor is going to really benefit this project. More seniors in that building is going to be much better for everyone.
So I'm. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable with this conversation. The application was for sixty units and 10% of the units being affordable housing with a height limit of, what was it, forty-three feet? And I don't think it's our place as a planning commission to negotiate with the applicant during a meeting about whether we would support something higher. I think if the applicant would like to pursue a taller building, then I think the applicant could amend their application and submit it. I just, I just don't think that it's appropriate to be giving the applicant guidance at this point, especially before we've had a public hearing. Just my opinion.
I would agree.
100% agree.
Looks like everybody's nodding here.
Yeah, I agree, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, then, then that's a mute point thing. Because you guys have already point blank said, you know, that it's not, you're not going to go to it. So. I mean, there were a couple council members that were just adamant right off the bat. So.
Yeah, even, even if you did reapply or amended application and we supported it, it's still totally up to the council. And you've already gotten feedback from the council is my feeling. So that's all I'll say.
I'll, I'll agree with you there.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, well, I think this might be beating a dead horse. But the the thirty-five foot limit, the original intent of that was just to preserve views?
No, that's just been the height limit established since, as far back as I'm aware.
Okay.
Not considering just views, but any other purpose, given the size of our town.
I have a question. If we delay the project further, is the zoning will change to give more height? Like in the near future?
So there's nothing proposed to increase the height? The form-based code that is being considered now by council retains the heights that are in existence currently.
Okay.
Anything else? Heather, did you have another question?
Um, no, no.
Okay, okay. Any other commissioner? Do you feel like we've covered it all, Mike?
Yeah, yeah. So your next meeting will be the public hearing on this. And I will make some amendments to the staff report based on some of the comments that we've got. And we'll get the, the unit size and the grading issue or the site slope issue and the grading or topography plan from the applicant and provide those to you in the packet for the next meeting.
Thank you. I have just a personal because I got locked out for a minute and I didn't, I just want to go back and make sure that I didn't miss the one thing on there. We have reduced the fifty percent of the transportation impact fee. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So that's specific to the affordable units. It's not all, it's not across the board. It's a fifty percent reduction for those six units.
So would that increase if we, if they gave us ten, could we give them more of a discount on that or not per unit?
That's something the planning commission could suggest to the council as a part of the development agreement, if that's your direction.
Okay. I just wanted to know if that was still on the table. I didn't know if that got taken off while I was away. All right. Well, I will thank then our guests for coming tonight. It's been very informative. We actually, a couple of us took a little stroll down there to look at that site today and the walkway that is along the river is a beautiful, it's a beautiful walkway and it could be stand for some improvement. It's a lovely area. What you really do here is the river a lot. So it's, it's a lovely site and we will work diligently to have our public hearing next week with our comments and get this to the council so that they can work with you and make their adjustments because they are the final ones to do this. So we appreciate your coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with us and I hope that you don't think, we just have to, you know, we ask our questions because we need to know too. So there you have it. Anybody else have any comments? Do we need a motion to adjourn the meeting or can we just adjourn it?
I want to thank you all.
You're welcome.
You can just adjourn the meeting.
Okay, the meeting is, it is eight oh five and I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Thank you.
Goodbye.
Thank you. Bye.
Nice evening.
Everyone. Thanks, Judy.
Mike, if you can stay a few seconds, I have a question.
Sure, yeah.
Um, the architect was Charlie Morgan. I heard Morgensen and I want to make sure I have it right.
Yeah, Charlie Morgan.
And the other person who spoke, Nicole Klink, is that architect too?
She's always referred to herself as Misty. I don't know if her formal name is Nicole, that Misty Klink. Yeah, she's, she works under Charlie.
Okay, I was just going with what it said on her thing, on her, so I should put Misty?
Yeah, that's what it's on her email, at least.
Okay. Okay, I'll send you these notes. I don't know if it's too much or not for what you normally use, but I got what I got. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so I think we'll need to get some more details in the development agreement about how the city monitors or, like you said, some kind of program that ensures that commitment.
Yep. Okay, perfect. We can talk about that later. Thanks.
Yeah. All right. Well, have a good evening then. All right. Well, have a good evening then.
No. But you can do it first and then out.